Secondly, we've sunsetted this issue. So we've allowed for the opportunity for us to take a look at the process that emerges, and then come back and fix it, and hopefully, address some of the shortcomings in the proposal. And I would mention that in a year, the application, we're not going to get thousands of applications for condo conversions, because that is not the point at which they would have to pay the relocation fee. They would have to pay it when they're basically ready to evict the people. And that time is not likely to occur in the next year for a whole slew of condo owners and tenants. So that would give us an opportunity to really hone in on a better program. On the negative side, we have to be aware and concerned about the possibility of a bureaucratic nightmare in the appeal process. We will have an opportunity to review that, I think, very shortly. And that's something that we will probably have to shore up at the end of a year when we decide to move forward with this proposal, or, I would hope, improve upon it. I also am concerned that the low-income folks do not have all the opportunity I would like to see for them to get to the top level of assistance, and I think they need it most. I, in particular, think that the people who have moved in in the first three years are in greater need of assistance, and more assistance, because they outlaid the capital to move in, and it takes time to absorb that initial cost, like the first and last month, or whatever it is, the security deposit and all that. And so I think that everybody should qualify for a larger amount in that score, and would work toward that end. But I think that this measure is going to pass. And to fail to act, I think, is worse than to do something that is not quite a complete package. I also believe that we have to take a hard look at how to create homeownership opportunities in this process. The tenants absolutely need greater assistance to turn their relocation money into an opportunity to buy the condo that they now live in. And I believe that we can do a lot more in that score.
Declaring that we are in a cycle, District 5 Councilmember Jack Weiss says this ordinance is an attempt to achieve a balance, and may not be a perfect solution.
It is more clear to me than ever that this is a situation where both sides that have come to the table have made very, very strong points. I think the tenants' rights proponents in particular have made very clear that as the economy in Los Angeles has churned, tenants have gotten burned. And at the same time, I think we've had it presented very clearly from the landlord community that there is concern, understandable concern, in the Los Angeles economy that this council not act in a way that could have unpredictable, unforeseen, and unfortunate economic consequences. Because after all, we are dealing with a situation where, as I know Mr. Wesson will remember, as Ms. Gruel will remember, as Mr. Reyes will remember, from a hearing that we had in Council District 2 at Valley College, we had a presentation from a UCLA professor, an economist, and he made very clear to us that we are in a cycle. This is a cyclical thing in the economy. Here's where it started, here's how it may end, but there's no way of predicting how long the cycle lasts, and what will happen next. And his advice was to us, act cautiously when you're dealing with this type of situation. I think, colleagues, what Mr. Wesson has endeavored to do is draw a line of balance. That is how I perceive his proposal in its entirety. It is an effort to try to come up with a balance, with a reasoned solution that does not give either side everything it wants, but tries to act in a way that immediately, or as quickly as possible, provides tenants with enhanced relocation assistance, and at the same time, does not do anything that would have an unforeseen or unfortunate effect, or certainly unintended effect, on the local economy. It may not be a perfect solution, and I have heard him say more times than I've ever heard anyone say that he will be the first among us to repeal any aspect of it after a very short period of time if it is shown to be a bad idea, or if the facts on the ground bear that out.
Saying this is a very serious matter, District 6 Councilmember Tony Cardenas agrees this is not a perfect solution, and probably will not be the final answer.
What you're watching here is sausage in the making. If you've ever watched sausage being made, you probably would never eat it again. It's not pretty. It's not pretty, but it's something that is part of what happens. What Councilmember Wesson has done, and I want to thank him for doing this, he has taken an issue at the level of the electeds in the city of Los Angeles, not appointed officials, not bureaucrats, but the electeds, and said, "We need to craft a solution." And he admitted, he has admitted that this solution is not perfect. He has also admitted and committed that over the coming months, and over the next year, we will very likely hear more from the public, we will make changes, and we will have something different that was being contemplated for approval today. And with all due respect to the Appointed Planning Commission, this is the constitutional United States democratic system in which this should be decided. Because we, as elected officials, however we vote, are going to be talked about badly, either with renters, and/or property owners, developers, no matter what, no matter what. People are going to try to tarnish who we are as elected officials. This is a very serious matter. And I agree with everyone that this is not a perfect solution, but I commend my colleague Herb Wesson, who has already let us know, this is 99.9% chance that this is not the final solution. But people are being evicted as we speak today. People are getting their notices as we speak today. And there are some people who deserve more compensation than what we have today, so that's why I am willing to vote for this today, because I'm not getting evicted today, but someone, citizen or not, senior or disabled, single with children, is getting evicted today, and they deserve better than what the city of Los Angeles has today, and they deserve better. They also deserve better than what we are actually, hopefully, going to approve today or next week. They do deserve better. But the only way that we're going to get there is if we force ourselves to reckon with this in a timely manner, because this has been talked about for decades. And I can promise you this, this will have a much more final and better solution in the next 12 months.
All right. Any other questions, colleagues? As amended, we have this before us. Please open the roll.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, just for clarification, council's voting on all of those 6, 6A, 6B, and then 19 and 19A as amended.
Correct. The entire package. Okay? Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved. And we'll send that forth, if there's no objection, we'll send that forthwith to the mayor.
As you saw, the new relocation fees received unanimous support from council members, which means it'll take effect immediately with the expected signature of the mayor. Now, the ordinance will provide $6,810 to tenants who have lived in their apartments less than three years, or $14,850 for those older, disabled, or with minor children. $9,040 to tenants who have lived in their apartments more than three years, or $17,080 for those older, disabled, or with minor children. $9,040 to tenants whose income is 80% of the area's median income or less. Median income in this area for a family of four would be $55,450. And $17,080 for those older, disabled, or with minor children. This means testing will be discontinued July 1, 2008, if council chooses not to extend it. There would also be fees of up to $2,300 per unit, which developers and owners would have to pay to the city's Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Continue to watch Council Week in Review for updates on hall housing issues that come through your Los Angeles City Council. Council Week in Review is seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m., Saturday and Sunday at 9:30 a.m. L.A. City View is the government-access cable channel for the city of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings, and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35, or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at (213) 473-3978. And if you'd like to obtain a copy of an audio or videotape of a council or committee meeting, your request may be made in person at Room 395 in City Hall, or by calling (213) 978-1046. Or, of course, by dialing 311, your one call to City Hall. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending April 13, 2007. On behalf of Tony Agani and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Pobchoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Moving is who we are, inside and out. We breathe in so that we can breathe out, so that we can breathe in again. We dream, awake and asleep. We laugh. We talk with our hands. We give it a whirl. We become. We move, our bodies and minds, in constant conversation. And no matter how much we do it, it's never enough. We know this to the core, that as long as we are breathing, there is moving to be done. Multiple sclerosis stops people from moving. People with MS understand something about moving that is hard for most of us to comprehend, that moving is not a guarantee.
MS is a disease that damages myelin, the protective tissue that surrounds the nerve fibers of the brain and spinal cord. When a person has MS, myelin is lost, and that leaves behind scar tissue called sclerosis.
The scar tissue disrupts the electrical impulses that move information from the brain to the body, and makes movement difficult.
No one knows what causes MS, and there is no cure. The effects of MS are unpredictable, and show up in different ways in different people. One person may experience memory loss and fatigue, while another may suddenly lose the ability to see.
Someone might lose their balance and have trouble walking, while another may have slurred speech and tremors.
For some, the symptoms of MS come and go; in others, they last forever.
The National Multiple Sclerosis Society is a collective of passionate individuals, united by a common goal, to address the challenges of each person whose life is affected by MS.
...of our council meetings as well. If you're not close to a television or a computer, you can always use your telephone and call in to listen to the proceedings of our committees or the full council through a system called Council Phone. And if you call 213-621-CITY and dial through the menu, you'll be able to listen to our council meetings there as well. Our agendas are available at our city's homepage, lacity.org, and our meeting schedule is available online there as well. You can also contact the City Clerk's office or come here to Council Chambers to receive an agenda. The agenda is split into multiple items that are for public hearings and other ones which have already received their public hearings. If you'd like to speak on an item that has not yet had its public hearing, please fill out a speaker card in the back and hand it to one of the sergeants-at-arms, and we will make sure that you are heard for that item. All items receive a public hearing either in committee or here in council. Finally, we also have general public comment for items that are not on our agenda but are nevertheless under our jurisdiction. And if you'd like to comment on those, you two can fill out a speaker card and just put "public comment" in the upper right and give that to the sergeants-at-arms, and we will listen to those comments. We have council members Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Labange, Perry, and Wesson here on time, pursuant to our own council rules. A number of council members are late right now. We are waiting for them to begin our meeting. Councilmember Han, Councilmember Weezer, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Rosendahl, Councilmember Smith. We are expecting each of you. Councilmember Weiss is excused to arrive a little bit later, and Councilmembers Zine and Parks are excused on city business today. So we're expecting thirteen members at our strength, twelve to begin, and right now we have seven. So as soon as we have three more council members, we will begin the meeting. To reiterate who we are waiting for, Councilmember Han, if you will join us, Councilmember Weezer, if you will come down, Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Rosendahl, Councilmember Smith. We need three of you to arrive to begin the meeting. And thank you to all the members of the public who are here patiently waiting, and we will begin as soon as we have those members here. Thank you. The second forum call for Councilmembers Han, Weezer, Reyes, Rosendahl, and Smith. We are still awaiting your presence here. Council Chambers, if you please make your way. Council Chambers, Councilmembers Han, Weezer, Reyes, Rosendahl, and Smith. We are awaiting your presence. Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. We are waiting one more council member to begin this meeting. Councilmembers Han and Weezer and Smith, we are awaiting your presence. Mr. Smith is here. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alarcon, Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, ten members present in a court. Mr. President.
Members and our guests that are here today, I'd like to start this meeting with a moment of silence. Mr. Wesson, and I'm sure in some of the other council meetings, were able to as well say some comments about yesterday's tragedy at Virginia Tech. It's certainly one of the greatest tragedies that we've seen in the United States. If I could ask everybody to rise for a moment as we mark the tragic events of yesterday and as we think of those who were tragically taken from us. If I could please ask a moment of silence and/or prayer. Thank you. Thank you. And as we try to make sense of yesterday, an almost impossible task to do so, I know that Mr. Wesson spoke very eloquently in our committee about his own son who's in college and the thoughts of so many college students that we have throughout the country doing the most basic thing of going to school. But there certainly is trauma, not just at Virginia Tech, but nationally, and we appreciated very much those words that he said. If anybody would like to add anything, but we appreciate your commemoration of that. Mr. Smith?
The United States asks that all flags be lowered half-staff on federal properties. Are we doing that on the City of LA, do you know?
I do not know, but we will do that if it hasn't been done.
We should request the mayor to do that.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We'll make sure. They are. They are. Thank you. First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Reyes moves, and Mr. Rosendahl seconds. Without objection, those are approved. Next item?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Alarcon moves, and Mr. Cardenas seconds. Without objection, those two are approved.
And, Mr. President, this is Tuesday, and there is a flag salute.
Okay. Mr. Reyes, can I ask you to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? If I can ask everybody to rise once again for pledge to our flag.
Everyone stand. Please put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Next order of business?
Mr. President, do we should take up public comment at this time?
Yes, please. Let's begin with public comment and our apologies in last meeting that we had to put off public comment for some time. Sky Anderson will be our first speaker. Chuck Tenen will be the second, and then we'll go out to Van Nuys for our next two speakers. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Sky Anderson. I'm also known as Dave Thompson. Want to thank the City Council for having these public comments. It's truly democracy at work. I'm going to talk about alcoholism and drug addiction as a disease. AMA in 1956 recognized alcohol and drug addiction as a disease, and I see it everywhere. I saw a young man last night laying on the sidewalk, passed out about five o'clock, and I asked someone what was going on, and he said he's drunk. Well, he has a disease. He has an obsession of the mind and an allergy of the body. He has to drink. It's like he has to have food. He has to have something to fill him up. It's not something he can control. Mr. Garcetti, I know you make $2,000 a year, but what can I say? We've got people dying in the city all over, and you're so busy you can't pay attention. Anyway, the cost, here's the cost. This is today's newspaper. The county is going to allocate billions of dollars for the altar to help the dangerous jail system, put more sheriff's deputies on the streets, and target gang crime, all drug-related. The newspaper in Long Beach is a very good newspaper. About three months ago, they had headlines about a conference that was good on methamphetamine. Then here they have a killer on methamphetamine found guilty on the front page of their local section. The solution, the solution is education. We need to tell our kids they're getting involved with a disease they can't control. Two, we need to get programs. We need to get more program to get people off drugs. And three, the public need to be educated that this is not a sin. It's not a, they're not bad people who are addicts and alcoholics. They're sick people who need medical and spiritual help. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Anderson. Appreciate your comments. Chuck Tenen is our next speaker, and Marian Fogler will be our next speaker after that in Van Nuys.
Good morning, councilmembers. President Garcetti, many areas in Los Angeles are facing development and have very hazardous conditions like our street, 11927 Magnolia Boulevard in Valley Village, where hundreds of tenants are being displaced. A recent 31-page cumulative street traffic impact study was done by an independent company for developers who paid for it, for West Magnolia Boulevard in that area. It was reviewed by DOT, and they assumed it was an individual project, not the cumulative study they were supposed to do. It was a one-day study. One of the days, they said there was 750 cars. I personally counted 1,850 another day. Yet the street is hazardous, as Wendy Gruel admits in her 07-0820 motion that's forthcoming, stating that it's a hazardous street, and it lacks required and adequate safety infrastructures such as extreme traffic congestion, no storm drain to divert access floodwater conditions, 80-year-old sewers, street widening on a substandard street with only two lanes, dangerous, hazardous, and unsafe, like many streets in our city. So do you build first, fix later, or don't fix at all? Yet they're going to build 200 condos on a hazardous street. It needs an EIR before it's improved. Many, many areas need this. Some of it might reflect poor planning, transportation, actions to correct it. DOT did a two-page study on a 31-page report. Wow, they did a one-day study. How does that fix a hazardous street with terrible conditions on the street, and yet the developer gets to do that? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tenen. Our next speaker is Marian Fogler, to be followed by Sharon Brewer in Van Nuys. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm glad we did the prayer for those lost souls. My dearest condolences go out to all of them, and don't lose your heads, because this was a wacko nut. And he's a freak monster who is burning in hellfire to this very day. What he did to these people was a sin. In the Ten Commandments, thou shall not murder, thou shall not steal. Why are people hurting other people? Why are people committing crimes? I don't know, but this is against God, okay? This is anti-God act, and we must be together, stick together, and I really, I hope you all members of the council are all listening, the Board of Supervisors, the state, and the federal, please, please let's protect our country from these evil monsters, and let's allow the law-abiding citizens to band together so that we can be armed and ready and be ready with phones and be prepared to have... My daughter, I'm planning on having her go into college. We need security, undercover security on our college campuses. People need to have permits to carry guns. We need to make a deterrent against these monsters. I remember the Texas shooting in 1966, and I'm deployed, and this is appalling, and I'm very, very upset, and I'm very, very sorry, and I grieve for these people. And I don't want them to think that the law-abiding citizens who have arms are bad people. They're good people, just as much as ones who don't have guns. We just must unite and stop the ravages of murder and rape against our people by sticking together and enforcing the laws that we do have on the books. And let's just, don't lose our heads and be rational, okay? Let's keep cool. Thank you. Bless your heart.
Thank you, Ms. Fogler. Sharon Brewer is our next speaker, also in Van Nuys, and then we'll come back here for our next speaker.
Hi, Sharon Brewer. I'm back. I gave you guys a week's vacation. First, I want to take and compliment the organizers of the Victory for Victims Walk that was held at Lake Balboa on Sunday. It was a wonderful event. They cleaned up the park to where it probably looked better than it did when they first ended up going and setting up their event. The next thing I wanted to talk about is, I was at Lake Balboa, and again, parking is out of control, and something has to be done about the safety there. I was pulling out of a parking spot, and I had somebody come in the wrong way and yell at me to get out of their way, when they were going the wrong way and they wanted to come in and take my parking space. I didn't see anybody from Office of Public Safety. I didn't see any rangers. I didn't see anybody. They're parking on the grass. They're parking the wrong way. They're taking in parking too deep off of the walkway or off of the road, and something has to be done about having some kind of enforcement. You have the bikes, the roller skates, and the scooters on the walkpath, and it's just not accept, mm, sorry, not acceptable. And the thing is, I've been telling Recreation and Parks and the rangers and the council members about this problem for over five years, and I just want to let people know that if anything ever happens to me or my vehicle, that there will be lawsuits because they've been told about it. And again, I want to compliment the promoters for Victory for Victims in that they did a wonderful job, and I know that CD6 was there on the stage because I saw him. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer. Lucille Caruso is our next speaker here in Council Chambers. I'm sorry if I, is it Lucille? Is that correct? Yes. And then we'll go to Daniel Gus out in Van Nuys following that.
Hi.
Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Mr. Garcetti. I recycle on Wednesdays and Thursdays, and I have...
Could you get a little closer to the microphone? I'm sorry, we're just having a little trouble hearing you. Go ahead.
Okay, I recycle on Wednesdays and Thursdays, and I've lived in Hollywood for a while, and because the load is so big, I stay by Big Lots, and it's been okay for a long time. Friday, this man in the blue, he looks like a policeman, I thought he was a policeman, he wanted to take my picture, and he points to a sign in front of Big Lots and said, well, instead of taking you to jail, he'd take me to Big... Now, I've never, I don't have a criminal record, and I don't want to start one for something like that. I don't know how to fix that. I mean, I won't stay at Big Lots, but I don't know where to sleep. I can't carry, I don't know what to do. I don't want to go to jail.
I'll have a, that's in my district, ma'am. I'll have a deputy come speak to you right now and see what we can do to help you with the situation, okay? Thank you very much. Our next speaker is out in Van Nuys, Daniel Gus.
Good morning. In advance of item number 10 today, I wanted to share some comments about the proposed mandatory spay-neuter ordinance, and I'm asking the City Council to demand of Ed Boakes...
Excuse me, Mr. President. This is an item on today's agenda.
Okay, Mr. Gus, would you like to speak when this comes up on the agenda?
Actually, I'll alter my comments.
We can't take it?
I'll alter my comments if you can hold my time. If you can alter my comment, I will alter my comments to comment about the facilities. I won't comment about...
Okay. Go ahead then. That's fine.
Can I get my time reset?
I'll let you go past the time, don't worry, to make up...
Thank you, I appreciate it. I'd like to get an update on the status of the opening of spay-neuter clinics. The City of Los Angeles got $154 million for new shelters, $3 million of which was for spay-neuter clinics. We don't want empty gestures without spay-neuter facilities. We want the people of Los Angeles to get free spay and neuter services upon demand, and these clinics, for which we've already received $3 million, they're not open and they're not staffed. I am very concerned that the GM of Animal Services is using his time to write on the city's website about his dating life, about his religious beliefs, whether or not he has a Match.com account, whether or not he likes to cuddle, and I'm concerned that these things are lawsuits waiting to happen. As we know, the City of Los Angeles recently filed, recently settled a lawsuit for $100,000, a sexual harassment lawsuit against the Department of Animal Services, and it would be better if Mr. Boakes spends less time talking about his dating life and cuddling and religion and opens these spay-neuter clinics for which we've already received $3 million. We're missing 84% of our veterinarians, and I'm concerned where we're getting all sorts of public money, but we're not delivering the goods and services. The people of Los Angeles, there's a lot of working-class people, there's a lot of poor people, and they need to be able to go to these clinics that are not open and that the City of Los Angeles has received $154 million for, $3 million for these spay-neuter clinics. We've had the money since last July, and they have nowhere to go. So I'm concerned where that money is and what that schedule of these clinics opening. Thank you for the extra time. Thank you.
No, appreciate it. Thank you. Our last speaker is here in Council Chambers, Candido Mars.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members. Thank you, Mr. President, for that moment of silence for those who died yesterday. It was very tragic. There is another item on the paper today, DWP Cruz Costly Choice. I know that most of you know that I have been willing to challenge DWP many times, but I also will stand up for those who I feel that are doing a great job, and 99.99% of all the DWP workers are hard, honest, working people. When it comes to costs, when we're talking about the trunk lines, and for the public to know what a trunk line is, that is the main pipeline that the city receives its waters from, and it's very important that those jobs are done properly. It states here that contractors can do it cheaper, but are all the other additional costs that the DWP actually helps the contractor do, are those taken into account? So I want the public to understand that when the department was cut down to almost 8,900 workers from 12,000, it took, it was a big impact. So I think that we need to give the department credit, and the Board of Water and Power Commissioners are doing an outstanding job. We do need an in-house crew at the department because we know from experience that when we had the earthquake in 1994, contractors will be out there doing jobs that they can make the money, whereas we need in-house DWP crews to take care of some of those issues. So again, I think we need to give credit where credit is due, and the department is doing a wonderful job in providing our water and our electricity. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mars. And that's our last public speaker for general public comment. If we can please run through the agenda, Madam Clerk.
First items on the agenda, items noted for public hearings, items one through three, they are all street vacations, and I believe there are cards on one and three.
That is correct, so we'll call those two special for cards from the public. Item number two, does anybody wish to call that special? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll on two, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next items...
Mr. Reyes? Okay, next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items four through 13. Item number four is confirmation of a city official. Do we should hold that on the desk?
Let's go ahead, and we will hold item four for the commissioner hearing, confirmation.
And then that would leave five through 13, and item number 10, the committee report has been submitted and distributed to the council members.
Just, we've had a public hearing on these, colleagues, but just as an FYI, there are cards, considerable number of cards on number 10. Any specials, colleagues? Mr. Cardenas and then Mr. Reyes? Number 10, Mr. Cardenas? Mr. Reyes?
It's number 10.
Awesome, okay. Both Mr. Reyes and Cardenas call 10 special. Any other specials, colleagues? Call number eight special? And if there's no others, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. Next items, please.
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 14 through 19. 10 votes are required for consideration, and on 17-0, there was a request to receive and file that matter.
Okay. I do not see any speaker cards on these, so we will open and close the public hearings. Specials, Mr. Cardenas?
15.
15? Okay. Any other specials, colleagues? And that was a receive and file or a note and file?
It was a receive and file on 17-0.
Okay, we'll move that, and if there are no other members wishing to call anything special, let's take, open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next item.
On the supplemental agenda, item number 20 is also an item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. Is there any objection to consideration? Seeing none, it's before us. Anybody wishing to call it special? Also seeing none, let's go ahead then and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved as well. We can come back, Mr. Smith?
I can ask for a two-week continuance on number one. I understand the speaker is willing to accept that.
Okay. Great. Well, without objection, then, we will continue for one week. That would take us to, sorry, two weeks. That would take us to the first of May, without objection on item number one. Next item?
Mr. President, do we should take up item number four at this time, and that is the confirmation of the commissioner?
Sure, let's go ahead, and if we can take item four and ask our commissioner, Suzanne Manriquez, to come forward, our nominee, if you'd like to come forward to the desk. Is Ms. Manriquez here? Okay, why don't we hold that on the desk for a moment? And take up item three, please.
Item number three was called special for cards from the public, and that is a street vacation in Council District 9.
Okay, we've got two speaker cards. Robert Heller, if you'd like to come forward at this time, and after that will be Justin Schnell.
Please, go ahead, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm here because I live in the Vignus Building, which is on the alley, and my unit is on the alley of the building. And the reason I'm here is because one of the tenants in the 900 Building, which is across the alley, thought that the alley was being taken to build upon, and they would lose their public space there. I'm totally in support of this because it will keep a community sense by gating it, preserve the parking for the 900 Building, and I know that our building plans, I'm putting benches and trees while it's gated and closed off to continue the community sense of it. So I'm only here to say that I'm one of the people that started the petition. I believe it's better for the community. I think it is a very community-minded effort, and I'm very, very supportive of it happening. Thank you very, very kindly.
Thank you kindly, sir. Justin Schnell?
Hi, I work for the company that owns 900 First Street. Just came to speak in support. Mr. Heller, who's our neighbor across the way, it's the first I've heard that any tenants in 900 First Street have any sort of objections, and the, but I just came to say that we're in full support, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Like to recognize, that closed our public hearing. I'd like to recognize Ms. Perry.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, alley closures are more often than not a good thing because it provides the people who live around the alley the chance to secure the alley, to keep it free from graffiti, trash, things like that. There's been no intention or plan to build on the alley, and I believe the gentleman who said he initiated the petition, I suspect he did so because it provides an extra measure of security for the people who live or about the alley. So I would just ask for an aye vote and hope to reassure the individual who had some concern that their home was at risk, that that is not the intention of an alley vacation, not the purpose of an alley vacation. And I've never, I've never received any plan or request or anything to close the alley to take away anybody's home or to affect how people live. So with that, if we could proceed with an aye vote to go ahead and complete the vacation, that would be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perry. Anybody else in the council wishing to be heard? If not, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
That is approved. We can, do we know if we have the nominee yet for the Equality and Productivity Commission? If not, let's go ahead and let's also skip eight, if we can skip ahead now to number 10. Both Mr. Reyes and Mr. Cardenas call that special. I was just in the process, colleagues, of counting the cards. I believe we have about 35 cards on this, that we have had a public hearing on this, just to let folks know. So Mr. Cardenas and then Mr. Reyes? We'll wait for somebody to move.
Public hearing, public comment first.
For how long? We have 35 cards.
Are there two sides, I presume? I guess...
Almost, I'm just looking at them right now.
Well, let's first open it up for 10 minutes and try to see if we can get a cross-section of both pro and con.
Just as an FYI, so far I don't see one single against proposal. There are a couple that are blank. Here we go. I have some against ones here. Okay, we'll do 10 minutes each time?
10 minutes, and we'll try to see if we can get a balance of comments.
We're going to do 10 minutes for each side with a minute for each speaker. We'll ask Bill Dyer, first three will be from the four side, Bill Dyer, Jane Garrison, and Judy Crumpton. If I can ask folks just to line up so we can keep it flowing, and then after that Kathleen Camplin, William Shelton, and Sharon Shilkoff will be the next three. Welcome, Mr. Dyer.
Thank you. I'm Bill Dyer, Regional Director of End Defense of Animals. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'll be very brief. On behalf of the 20,000 cats and dogs born to be killed in our city's... to be killed in our city shelter last year, I urge you to support this bill. It'll go a long way in reducing the tragic overpopulation of cats and dogs in our state, and also it'll give us the opportunity to reach no kill in all of our shelters in California. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Jane Garrison is our next speaker.
Good morning. I'm Jane Garrison. I've worked in animal protection for over a decade. I've worked on projects all over the world, including spending three months in South Africa, in Thailand, Alaska. Most notably, I ran the rescue efforts in New Orleans following Hurricane Katrina. I personally rescued over thirteen hundred animals and directed volunteers for over six months following the storm. I would assume that most of you were pretty horrified when you saw the footage of animals who were abandoned and left there to die, animals who were on rooftops and who were swimming desperately trying to cling to life. Well, we have a Hurricane Katrina every year in California because five hundred thousand animals were left in New Orleans to die, and over five hundred thousand animals are killed in our shelters every year in California. So if you are horrified by seeing the footage from New Orleans, please, you should be equally horrified by the killing that goes on here every year, and sixteen thirty-four is a very important step to ending that killing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Judy Crumpton is our next speaker. Then Kathleen Camplin will be next after that, if you'd like to come forward, and William Shelton.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Judy Crumpton from Long Beach, and I'm not going to take up a lot of your time. We have key speakers here that will go over all the pertinent reasons why we need to support AB sixteen thirty-four. But I do want to share this with all of you. Our wonderful postal department in two thousand and two issued these two beautiful spay-neuter stamps. So please, everyone, let's support AB sixteen thirty-four. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathleen Camplin? And William Shelton will be next after that?
Good morning. My concern with this bill is simply how it will integrate into Los Angeles' existing law. Currently, dog owners pay one hundred dollar license fee. The state bill states a permit fee, meaning that dog owners will be paying two annual fees and permits per year. The city currently does not license cats, so cat owners will only be paying the new permit fee as mandated by the state. I'm also concerned about residents that use public transportation. If this bill is mandating that every single animal be spayed and neutered, people have to be able to get their pet to a sterilization center. Pets are not allowed on public transportation. Lastly, despite the word exemption in this bill, every police and search and rescue dog will need to reapply every year, and if accepted, pay the fee every year. That's not an exception. Thank you.
Thank you. William Shelton is our next speaker, and then Sharon Shilkoff?
Thank you, counsel, for letting us be heard in opposition of AB sixteen thirty-four. As you all know, it didn't, it was heard on the tenth of this month in the Assembly, and it failed to leave the Assembly Professions and Business Committee. And beyond that, can I also say that Assemblyman Levine hasn't given the amendments, or do you know the amendments? I'd like to know if you've read the amendments, which will be heard on the nineteenth by the Assembly. And if you do, we would like to know them too, so we know what you're endorsing by the City of Los Angeles in this bill, sixteen thirty-four. Sixteen thirty-four is creating a bureaucracy over the mere instance of pet ownership. It also is, will cost taxpayers more, let anyone deny that. It will not give any relief to the shelters of this city. In fact, a dog who is intact can just as easily be dumped. This issue is about irresponsible pet ownership, which this bill does not address. Thank you very much.
Sharon Shilkoff? After that, we will come back on the four side to Jody Parker, Marlene Goodman out in Van Nuys, and Dr. Lisa Ayer.
I yield my one minute to Judith Brekka.
I'm sorry, we can't by practice yield. If you would please use that minute yourself, or else we'll go to somebody else from the against, the next person on the against side. Okay. Thank you.
I'm opposed to AB sixteen thirty-four and to the City of Los Angeles becoming a sponsor or supporting this bill. As a concerned animal person, I encourage people who get a dog from me that will not be used as a performance dog to spay or neuter at the appropriate time. But AB sixteen thirty-four takes away an owner's ability to make that decision when it is right for the animal. A key issue is whether the actions of people who do not take care of their animals should result in statewide legislation abridging the right of most Californians to own an unaltered dog or cat. Assemblyman Levine uses a number of five hundred thousand animals destroyed annually. It would be interesting to hone in on that number by deducting those animals whose temperaments and health issues keep them from becoming, being candidates for adoption, feral cats, and dogs that shelters have brought into California from other states and countries. But whatever the number, there are many more than five hundred thousand Californians who today enjoy pet ownership and enjoy having a range of people from whom they can acquire their animals.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Jody Parker.
Good morning. Is it okay if I give my time to Karen?
We can't by practice, I'm sorry. It's not permitted, but we're going to get through as many people as we can in the ten minutes. My apologies, please.
Okay, I'll be quick then.
I'm sure you have good things to say, too.
Actually, I was just going to say that I do, I'm in strong support of AB one-six-three-four. Thank you.
Great, thank you. That will allow more time for others. Marlene Goodman in Van Nuys is our next speaker.
Yes, my name is Marlene Goodman, and I am representing the Directors of Animal Welfare for the Neighborhood Councils, Stray Cat Alliance, and Senior Citizens for Humane Legislation and Education. Sixteen eighty-four will ensure that companion animals will be able to lead healthier lives. These kind of animals live longer. California communities will be safer because altered animals roam less and escape less frequently. This means a reduction in dog bites. AB sixteen thirty-four will definitely bring taxpayer savings. More than fifty percent of the dogs and cats in public shelters die every year. It can cost between one hundred dollars and two hundred and fifty to house, feed, and kill one animal. More dollars will be collected by the city when backyard breeders and those that escape paying their share of business fees and licenses and they, and federal taxes will become lawful citizens that will contribute to the city instead of putting all this money that they raise now by putting it in their pockets.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Dr. Lisa Ayer is next.
Good morning. I am here to speak on behalf of Beagles and Buddies Dog Rescue, based in El Monte, California. And I am the Development and Communications Associate for Beagles and Buddies. I want to express our support, strong support, actually, for this bill, and encourage you to endorse it through this resolution. We have been rescuing dogs for about fourteen years in Southern California, and even some nationally, and we've rescued and rehomed over nine thousand dogs. But, you know, as wonderful as that is, we all know, based on the stats that have already been presented, that we need a lot more help to really get a full handle on this problem, to save these animals, and to make sure that we do right by them. We're in the twenty-first century. I think that it's about time that we get the no-kill policy really going strong here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Judith Brekka is our next speaker. Judith Brekka, and then Bruce Schwartz, and Florence Blecher.
I am representing the Association of West Los Angeles Responsible Dog Owners, which is an unincorporated association of dog owners who live on the west side. Most of us live in Consmann Rosen dolls district. And we show our dogs and compete in various performance events. One of the things that we are most concerned about this bill are the health issues that are associated with early spay and neuter. Dr. James Surpell, who's a professor and director of the Center for Interaction of Animals in Society, Department of Clinical Studies, School of Veterinary Medicine, University of Pennsylvania, has indicated that he believes this bill is premature and ill-considered. He further adds in an email which he sent to a friend of mine, that at four months of age, dogs and cats are too immature to be able to predict their adult temperament and physical soundness.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Bruce Schwartz is next, and then Florence Blecher.
Hi, my name is Bruce Schwartz. I'm a former president of the Welsh Terrier Club of America, and I do Welsh terrier rescues for the city and county and all of Southern California. But what I'd like to talk to is the major issues, the impact is financially on the city. Dog shows are a four billion dollar business in California, and between twenty-five percent and thirty-five percent of that revenue flows into Los Angeles in fees, hotels, meals, and transportation. Tourism is also an important source of income, and more and more people are traveling with dogs and cats. In an environment where only by carrying around your spay-neuter certificate would be one free from ticketing an immediate spay-neuter or fine, will not encourage people to come to California and Los Angeles. Those of us who show dogs, as this bill stands now, shout out of showing any dog born after the passage of AB sixteen thirty-four. There are no shows that exist where a dog can be entered prior to six months of age, and most large dogs are not competitive until after a year of age. This bill, only after exemptions for dogs and cats under four months of age
Thank you. You can finish this sentence. Go ahead. Thank you. Florence Blecher? Excuse me if I mispronounced, sorry, Florence.
It's Blecher, Eric.
Blecher, that's what I thought.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. These are for, to forward the record. I'd like to read into the record a letter from the North American Police Work Dog Association regarding this bill. To whom it may concern, I am the National Secretary of the North American Police Work Association and have been for the past nineteen years. We are one of the two top largest law enforcement work dog associations in the United States and the second oldest. Then they go on to describe their past. We are, we were contacted by concerned citizens of your state regarding AB sixteen thirty-four. We, as an organization, have researched this proposal in great deal, in great detail. We've also been in contact with many of our California members and accredited trainers. Lastly, brought this matter to the full attention of our board. This bill must be defeated. Most, this totally, this is totally inadequate to protect law enforcement in California. Most of the breeding dogs that create working police dogs are not themselves police dogs, but are bred and used in the protection dog sports where the working abilities are tested. Anyhow, please take a look at the letters. Police and working dog associations are against this bill.
Thank you. I want to read into the record, we're about three minutes over the ten minutes that were asked for. I want to read the other names into the record that were here, and also give Kamatou, from Assemblymember Lloyd Levine's office, the opportunity to address this from the table. Sharon Brewer was here. Just, there were four more cards on the against side and thirty-five on the four side. On the four side, or blank, excuse me, some of them may be on the against. Sharon Brewer, Gina Saroni, Sherry Shankar, Ed Buck, Judy Mancuso, Daniel Gus, Margie Dobkin, Bill, can't quite read that, Krum, Jillian Lang, Hayes Lynn, Whitney Smith, Miriam Fogler, Ana Valakoff Doom, Allison Lang, Julia Pennington, Marie Atake, Andrea Nespom, Melia Kaplan, Karen Dawn, Ellen Schneiderman, Derek Brown, Mary Catalano, Deborah Corday, Pam Wilkinson, Laurel Kinder, Irene Sri Bunhong, excuse me if I mispronounced that, Periel Stanfield. On the against side also were here were Bill Edwards, Mrs. Carol Esterkin, Mrs. Kathy Turner, and Casey Cantrell. With that, we'll return to the two members who, oh, excuse me, just before that, Kamatou would like to come forward from Assemblymember Lloyd Levine's office. And then we'll turn it back over to Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, counsel. My name is Kamatou. I am a field representative for Assemblymember Lloyd Levine, and the Assemblymember hopes to have your vote on this very important bill for the State of California.
Thank you. And one other one to read into the record is Terry Austin on the four side. Thank you. Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you very much. I'd just like to point out an answer to one of the statements that was made by one of the speakers just a few minutes ago, and I'll read a section of the bill, and it says, "A dog or cat licensed that meets the requirements of subdivision A of Section 122336.2 shall be considered a permit for purposes of this chapter." Somebody said earlier that the word permit and license do not satisfy each other, but that points out that it does. Mr. Bokes, can you come forward, please? I think this is a very important bill because animal cruelty comes in many, many forms. What we've done as human beings, we have taken these beautiful animals, and we've domesticated them, and we have put them in an environment where they don't have any natural predators, and therefore, unlike in the wild, we can have a few animals that becomes thousands, then become millions. Just for example, just so people understand what we're faced with, with our domestic cats and dogs, just two cats, a pair of cats or a pair of dogs can actually have an offspring lineage of twenty-five thousand animals. Is that about right, Mr. Bokes? Does it really extrapolate that far?
Well, actually, in the scope of time, it's unlimited, because these animals will continue and continue to reproach.
But I mean, a human being can actually witness, if you were to track all the offspring...
On the chance of a human lifetime, you mean, seventy, eighty years? I would not be a bit surprised.
If you look at the numbers and you look at the, the way in which the math works out, you get to twenty-five thousand real easy. Speaking of twenty-five thousand offspring, can you please tell us how many vouchers you provided last year, exercised vouchers for free spay and neutering in the City of Los Angeles? My time, please.
Nearly thirty-nine thousand, and we're on track to do forty-four thousand this year.
Thirty-nine thousand. So our City of Los Angeles is exercising about forty thousand or so free spay and neutering for cats and dogs within our city limits?
Indeed.
In a given year?
To the best of my knowledge, Los Angeles leads the country in being proactive on spay-neuter.
Now, unfortunately, what's the answer to the question of what is the biggest contributor to having an overpopulation of domestic animals in our city? Is it, gosh, you answer the question?
It's Mother Nature. These are animals that have instinctual and hormonal drives that cause them to break down fences, break through windows, do what they can to get out into our streets and procreate. And many of the dog attacks and bites and even fatalities are related to intact animals. Three times more often, an intact animal will bite, attack, or kill a human being, and the State of California actually leads the country in those kinds of attacks.
Now, what's the best effort that we can do as a city to reduce or to get to a no-kill city? Is spay and neutering at the front end of it, or is it just a small aspect of this effort?
Well, several years ago, the City of Los Angeles committed to a no-kill, and really took some moral leadership in the United States, and demonstrated that commitment by allocating a hundred and fifty million dollars to build mega shelters for the sheer number, the crushing number of animals that we take in every year, in the neighborhood of fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand we take in each year?
Right. And that's a back-end approach to the problem. And the Hayden bill has actually compounded that problem by requiring shelters to hold animals for longer periods of time and provide more medical costs. And it's actually generated the third-largest reimbursable state mandate in the state. It's at a level of one hundred and twenty-one point six million dollars today, and conservatively, conservatively growing at about thirty million dollars a year. So what we've learned is that back-end approach to pet overpopulation is very, very expensive. If I can use an analogy, it's very much like trying to mop up your basement with a broken water pipe without fixing the pipe first. And what Assembly Bill sixteen thirty-four helps us do is fix that pipe so that all of our efforts will be more meaningful in reducing the number of unwanted animals in our communities and the number of unwanted animals dying in our shelters.
Now, when we, when we recover an animal from the street or what have you, and it ends up in one of our shelters, do we require that the parent cat or dog come and retrieve that animal?
We make it, we certainly encourage...
No, 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 I'm talking about the domestic animal that, that had that offspring. Do we require that animal to come and vouch for, or come pick up that animal? It's a silly question, but please, follow me.
Okay.
I believe the answer is no, Mr. Bokes.
Okay, thank you. No, 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 we don't. Uh-uh. No way.
Yes. My point is, my point is, the animals are having offspring, and some... My point is, my point is, the animals are having offspring, and some litters as much as six, or eight, or 10, or 12 at a time.
Right.
And these animals can have offspring more than once a year. And that's how we get to this multiplier effect, and that's how we end up picking up at least 50,000 animals on the street a year. And then if people don't come and pick them up, we do the unconscionable in some cases, and they're euthanized.
Right.
So my point is, it is up to the human beings to be responsible.
Right. And now that I'm on track with your question, as a matter of fact, in Los Angeles, we can take in as many as 1,000 orphan neonates a month, a month. These are animals that come in without their mothers, and there's no way to provide, and we have an army of fosters developing who are bottle-feeding these little creatures until they're old enough to be adopted. But that's an extraordinary burden on the city and cost to the city, and it's a direct result of irresponsible pet ownership.
Exactly. Irresponsible pet ownership. The dog and cat world do not have a legislature. The dog and cat world do not have shelters. Human beings do. So my main point is this, unless we, as human beings, do not recognize that we need to use the tools necessary in which we need to work with our domestic animals in order that we do not euthanize them, in order to make sure that we do not allow them to overpopulate, and therein lies other forms of animal cruelty. Unless we do those things, we will have cruelty to animals in our midst, and the bottom line is, we only have ourselves to blame, the human beings.
He said that right. I couldn't agree with you more.
But the reason, what I'm getting at is this, and what we need to do as a city is make sure that we have enough vouchers to meet the demand. I think it's a very impressive number that we have. Unfortunately, we're going to have to find more funds if it goes to 45,000, if it goes to 50,000, but I welcome that, because I know that the numbers will diminish over time if we get in front of the curve instead of just trying to chase it.
Right. And to that point, if I can, just to address the need, over the last six years, the city has had to increase the budget of animal control by 36%.
I got six minutes, right. Go ahead.
Thirty-six percent, with a 28% increase in this year alone, just to meet the crushing demand of the animals. So your point is well-taken. With fewer animals, the cost of animal control will go down.
Now, the cost for vouchers, what is it coming out to, say, in this budget year, roughly, to the nearest million?
About 2.1.
So over 2 million?
2.2 million dollars.
Basically, over $2 million. If we didn't have to euthanize 40,000 animal, excuse me, if we didn't have to spay or neuter 40,000 animals, that means those $2 million will very likely go back into having better care, better facilities, more veterinarians, et cetera. It eats away at that same budget, doesn't it?
Absolutely. And as a matter of fact, about $18 million goes to the animals that we actually end up killing. So 18 million of our $25 million budget.
So there you go. $20 million right there. $2 million on the preventative end and $18 million on the euthanizing end. We need.
This bill was designed to be cost-neutral.
Exactly. And what I'd like to do is get back to the issue of responsibility. What I see in this legislation is the opportunity for us to hold the human beings accountable, the individuals who call these animals their pets. And the fact of the matter is, I cannot understand why a domestic household pet would need, should not be spayed or neutered. I don't get it. We may hear some arguments as this discussion goes on, or Lloyd Levine may have heard it in his legislative sessions or what have you, but I still, to this day, do not understand that, because there are provisions for people who actually have breeding licenses, correct?
Yes.
So we are not prohibiting people from breeding animals if that is what they do for a living, if they're doing it responsibly and licensed, et cetera.
Absolutely right. The breeders that I have talked to, by and large, have been responsible breeders, and this bill exempts them.
Have you met a responsible breeder in, because you do, you run into a lot of people in this arena, have you personally met a responsible breeder that you consider someone to be responsible, who's against this bill?
I suspect that there are, yes. I have not personally met with any.
What I'm trying to get at, ladies and gentlemen, I'm not attacking the responsible breeders in the room. What I'm saying, what I'm trying to get at is, Mr. Boakes, you have discussions with a lot of people, and of the people you've had discussions with, have you discussed this bill with any breeders? Let me take out the word responsible, any breeders?
I have, I have.
What do they have to say about it, the ones that you've spoken to?
Would it be possible to quote a document? Because this is, there's a phenomenon, not only in Los Angeles, but across the state and even across the country, where this issue comes up. In the city of Sacramento, I believe, Sacramento actually brought in a mediator to work between the breeders and the folks who are for spay neuter. And the end result, and this was an independent but partial third party, and if I could read the findings, he says, "There's little possibility of finding common ground between the two camps. Evidence: While those opposed frequently cite irresponsible breeders as the problem, they refused participate in a discussion designed to define and distinguish responsible from irresponsible breeders. When an individual opposed to the ordinance suggested a breeder's license as an alternative, the group retorted in choral, speaking no. One participant who attended coalition meetings was asked if he would support the ordinance if license fees were not raised, and he said no. Those opposed do not believe there is an overpopulation problem. Their acknowledgement that there is an overpopulation problem at the end of the evening was gratuitous and conflicts with every other comment they made at the meeting, on the phone, and in person with this consultant and all other correspondents. The opposition is vehemently opposed to any regulation whatsoever regarding breeding rights. To them, mediation means withdrawing the ordinance and a confession by animal control that they are incompetent, the shelter is poorly run, and the coalition is a thinly disguised animal rights conspiracy to eliminate pet ownership. The tactics of the opposition are to personally attack the animal control department and the motives of the backers, as well as to attempt to filibuster any hearings. Even with the strong facilitation of the mediator, the opposition still spoke roughly three times longer than the supporters. The framers of the ordinance have spent a great deal of effort in public forums, contrary to the complaints of the opposition, and making numerous changes to the legislation. The people doing the work of animal control believe it is a good tool to assist in the task of reducing the number of animals killed, increasing the number of animals adopted, and reducing the number of community complaints against dogs and cats. But what that independent finding was, is that there is oftentimes no logical argument for opposing this bill, there's just opposition.
Now, I understand. I've been in the legislature, I've been on the council, and I've seen that in the past, and this is a very passionate issue.
And Mr. Cardenas, sorry, just to, we may need you to press your button, you've had your six minute, almost seven minutes, so they said I just sat up here, so if you want to conclude, you want to say a statement before we go to the next speaker, and then we'll put you back on the queue?
No, no, I'll speak next go-round.
Okay. Mr. Reyes, followed by Mr. Alacon, Mr. Garcetti, and then Mr. Cardenas.
Mr. Boakes, I want to applaud you for the work that's been going on in the city, and we've got the new yard in my district off of Lacy Street. But my concerns are more of information, how we get it out there, and have a rare opportunity to talk about how we get to the multilingual, multicultural dynamics of the city. As you know, many of our districts, I should say at least three or four, have a significant percentage of communities living at or below poverty. Ten years ago, it was a common sight to see packs of dogs running the streets. As recent as five, six years ago, it was still very prevalent. I think it's calmed down somewhat, in my district at least. I haven't heard it much in the press, so I'm assuming it's happening throughout the city. But I wanted to ask you, what is the, what programs do you have for low-income people should this program move forward, knowing that they are struggling, some are struggling enough to, they have to make decisions between paying rent and food, now they have this other cost? So those are the harsh realities for thousands and thousands of people who like animals, but some might call it irresponsible, some might call it lack of information, some might call it a process of assimilation, however you want to phrase it, the fact is, the funds aren't there. Can you speak to that, please?
I certainly can, and I really need to tip my hat to the City Council and the city of Los Angeles for their forward thinking in the past in allowing animal services to develop a very comprehensive array of spay-neuter programs. One specifically addresses yours, Mr. Councilman, it's a free spay-neuter program for any resident of the city of Los Angeles who falls below the poverty line.
You said free?
Yes.
Now, how do they get to that program? How do they come informed about how to receive that free service?
We partner with 110 rescue organizations in the city who help us get the word out. The information's on our website, and we also have field officers who use that as a tool in helping to solve problems in neighborhoods as they pass out vouchers to residents.
And what languages is that made available, that information?
We do the best that we can to provide information bilingually. We have identified an outstanding animal control officer who is doing a lot of advertising on our Hispanic stations and radio stations to help us get the word out, and we do need to do more, and we intend to do more. And one of the provisions of this bill is the money that it generates can be used in that effort to help get the word out.
How many centers are available that the city operates where folks can get to that center in order to have benefit of these programs? I know you have one on Lacy Street.
There are certainly hundreds, if not a couple of thousands, veterinarians throughout the city of Los Angeles that could provide this service. We, our South LA Spay-Neuter Clinic will be opening to the public within the next week or so, I anticipate, and we have a plan to opening our North Central Shelter in the next couple of weeks after that, possibly as soon as that, maybe a little longer. And ultimately, by the end of this year or early next year, we will have seven spay-neuter clinics capable of doing between 15,000 and 20,000 surgeries.
Going to a veterinarian office could be expensive. Can you speak to the mechanics of how one connects if they qualify and they want to spay or neuter their animals?
Right. We advise folks as we give them the vouchers or the coupons, which veterinarians accept them, and we have a long list of veterinarians that accept those.
So it's through coupons? They would have to pick up the coupons at a certain location?
Or they're delivered, as I said, by our many, many partners in the community and our own animal control officers.
They just need to know how to ask for them?
Basically.
Okay. And that in and of itself is a learning process for many who have much higher priorities.
Absolutely. And I think it's important to understand that the purpose of this legislation is not to, you know, go door-to-door in brown shirts and, you know, and make sure that people spay neuter their animals. Animal control is a complaint-driven department. We know where the problems are because people call us time after time after time with the same recurring problems. Our own chief administrative officer was bitten by a dog over the last few days. This was the third bite. If an officer had gone out there on the first time and had given them the information to get their animal spayed and neutered, the second and third bite very likely would not have occurred. We have a woman in Rancho Cucamonga who was attacked and mauled by two purebred rottweilers just over the weekend, intact. So, you know, animal control can, one of the arguments is, well, why aren't you just enforcing the leash law? Well, we do enforce the leash law, and we write a lot of citations for the leash law, but as long as the animal has that drive, it will continue to find ways to get out of a yard, get out of a home, to fulfill that drive.
But just my last point is, access to these coupons, getting these coupons in the hands of the folks who qualify, they can get the coupons, and they can be informed. Now, do the neighborhood organizations, the neighborhood councils, homeowner associations, local libraries, the local churches, do they have access to these coupons, or how to get to the coupons?
They do, and in fact, another program that Animal Services is going to be bringing to the City Council at some point in the very near future is a program called Humane LA, where we're working with every city department to identify points of delivery service where we can get as much information to our constituencies and our residents and people who are needing our services. So it's not restricted just to animal control and animal organizations, but all of our city departments, we're hoping, will be able to distribute this information, and we'll be absolutely delighted to work with all the city council offices in helping to get these vouchers out through your field offices.
So how far in the future do you see this happening?
It's coming down very, very quickly. We're going to have a report to the mayor, I believe, within the next two or three weeks, and.
Maybe by the summertime?
That is my anticipation.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Before we go to the next speaker, I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Labange for an introduction.
Thank you, members, Mr. President. Your children, take your children to workday for the Los Angeles County Jury Services Division, if I could have that correctly said. Please welcome these young people. Take their child, they're very special. Want to welcome them to the John Farrow Chambers, and also make sure you go up to the top and see the Tom Bradley Tower and look out over the courthouse complex. As you know, Madam President, the Los Angeles Civic Center is the largest complex of government building outside our nation's Capitol. Thank you very much. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. I don't think I did know that, so.
Madam President.
Miss.
Madam President, would it be appropriate for me to make a correction to a statement that was made earlier?
Sure. And following your remarks, Mr. Alacon will be our next speaker.
Okay. For clarification, I think somebody said that a wonderful organization in the city called COFs, which stands for Coalition Organizations for Pets and Public Safety, has committed to purchasing two additional spay-neuter vehicles for the city if this legislation passes, specifically designed to go into the poorer areas of our community to provide this service, and that would be in addition to the wonderful Amanda Foundation and the Sam Simon Foundation vehicles. We'd have four vehicles available to help folks who can't transport or get to veterinarians any other way.
Thank you. Mr. Alacon.
Yes, Mr. Boakes. We would all like to think that we wouldn't have to legislate our humanness, but obviously, we have severe problems with regard to caretaking of animals throughout our neighborhoods. But when we do legislate our humanness, we have to be careful of the repercussions, and so I do have some concerns. First of all, 2.2 million annually for vouchers for spaying and neutering, where we have approximately 400,000 animals, it's estimated, these are numbers my staff got from you.
These are rough estimates, yes.
Which is less than 10%, my calculation, about 36,000 animals, less than 10% are available for low-income people to get the vouchers for spaying and neutering, and I don't think that would keep the pace of the need in our community. So clearly, one of the challenges the city of Los Angeles would have, and by the way, I would mention that whatever your current profile is with regard to targeting for violations of this nature, this is a state mandate, which means that you may be required to enforce far beyond your current position. And in terms of liability, I'm concerned for one issue, that if in fact you're not able to live up to the mandate, that the city could be held liable should animals that aren't cited, and it could happen for a variety of reasons, I don't need to tell you, somebody calls and reports a dog, but you're not able to get out there and that dog goes and attacks somebody, the city's liability could be present. So that's one issue. The other issue is the.
May I speak to that?
Is the 400,000 animals. Yeah, well, hold my time then. Did you want to respond?
If I may speak to that. One of the little-known facts, perhaps, is that LA Animal Services was one of the original authors of this piece of legislation, and since that time, nearly 100 animal control organizations across the state, through the organization of CACTA, and many, many other humane and animal control organizations that enforce animal control laws, support this legislation because it is very, very elegant in the way that it does not increase the cost for enforcement. It allows animal control officers to enforce this legislation within the current scope of services. We respond to complaints. We go out on complaints, sometimes, as in this case with the person who was bitten on the third time, we could have fixed it the first time, and it saved money for the city, but we had to go out a second time because there was a bite, and a third time because of a bite. So this legislation was designed by animal control enforcers and many others to draw down the cost of animal control over time, not only in the enforcement side of it, but also in the sheltering side of it. We will see fewer animals in our shelters, and that's going to save us a lot of money.
Okay. You were not responding to my question about liability. The question of liability is.
Well, there's less risk, there's less liability. Well, there's less risk, there's less liability.
If the state imposes a mandate to enforce on the spaying and neutering, you won't have the choice. And my concern is that with only a 10% budget capability to respond to the 400,000 animals in need, we're going to fall far short of being able to manage this program. So I would like to know what alternatives you propose to get us to the ability to manage such a program. Also, is there a cap on veterinarians for spaying and neutering? A cap on the cost for spaying and neutering? Because once this happens, it seems to me they would have a cash cow in terms of being able to jack up their prices and particularly affect the poor and working poor populations. So I'm concerned about the cost. It might be a burden to the city of Los Angeles. And I, you know, I support the concept of the bill. Let me make that very clear. But I don't think that you have presented to us a management suggestion or proposal for managing the legislation once it would take effect, and I think we're in dire need of hearing that from you.
Right. Well, the good news is that the... Management program is in existence, and it's the city's licensing program. And as I explained earlier, initially, you have to realize this legislation is going to be long-term, it's going to be rolled out, there's going to be education components, and eventually, through the nexus of our licensing program and enforcement...
What do you mean, long-term? What do you mean, long-term?
We'll see results probably in the first four or five years, dramatic reductions in the numbers of animals coming into our shelters and cost animal control. So anyway, the management tool that you are looking for is the city's licensing program. What this tool, that this legislation allows us to do is go out where the animals are that are causing the problem. They are typically intact, they are typically unlicensed. This legislation provides the incentive to license the animal because the fine, if they don't comply, or when they do comply, is waived. And in the city of Los Angeles, we have the wonderful opportunity to provide free and low-cost spay neuters, not only through the city programs, but there's many other...
But only for 10% of these animals?
That's what we're handling. But there's many, many other organizations in the city, and the veterinarians as well.
And Mr. Alakon, I know if you want to ask some additional questions, we'll ask you to push your button for the next item, our next speaking, or Mr. Garcetti, followed by Mr. Rosendahl, followed by Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much, Madam President, and thank you to all the members of the Los Angeles community who are here on this issue today, and appreciate also the work of the council members who've been speaking about this. And I think, you know, the context that Mr. Cardenas put this all in was the proper one, and I want to thank him for his words as well. Those of us who have served on the Budget Committee, you recall a couple of years ago when there was the move to take the increased fee in licensing here locally and put most of it in the general fund, I was proud to stand up and say, no, 100% of that should go to the spay and neutering for lower-income individuals in the city. And for those of us who are representing lower-income areas, like Mr. Reyes brought up as well, I mean, it's also interesting to see how passionately we feel about this issue because I think we're the ones who get hardest hit. But, you know, we're between a rock and a hard place, between trying to reduce the killing and one day end it here in Los Angeles, and making sure that it is not done in a discriminatory way so that our people, our constituents, aren't hit hardest by regulations that seem good but aren't really played out on the street level as we know them to be with poor and working-class families. I feel better in Los Angeles than other places, and I know people will agree to disagree with that, but I feel at least in this area of providing vouchers, we still have a lot more to do, but at least we have the consensus around this horseshoe and with this mayor and in this town about what to do. The statewide legislation, though, will also impact other areas, and our position impacts our fellow Californians. So I am in favor of the legislation, but what I would like to see, and I don't know if you know anything about the amendments, is that we add as part of the legislation or that we support this only if it mandates that other, that every city and county which has an animal services department provide low-income spay-neuter vouchers. Because I think we need to be on the record of making sure that the unintended consequences of what we're doing doesn't affect a county or a city someplace else in California where suddenly we turn the poor and the rich into two different classes of folks, and where we don't take this as an opportunity to really leverage this for animals throughout the state as well. Is that something, if you could hold my time, that's proposed?
Counselmember Garcetti, and Madam President, with your permission, I'd like to introduce Judy Mancuso, who is the campaign chairman for this initiative. And she has the latest information on these amendments and can answer your questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, and thank you for hearing this bill today. Presently, the bill states that the money from the fines and the permits go to administration, enforcement, outreach, and free and low-cost spay and neuter programs. And I can express to you what I've learned from other Californians around the state. And our problem in California is not voucher and spay and neuter programs. We have been trying for the past decade to educate people and provide them with spay and neuter and education. And I just want to let you know that in 2005, our total intake of dogs and cats in California was over 840,000. We euthanized, killed, over 430,000. This, if you quantify this to how much did it cost the taxpayers, it comes to $259 million. In a 10-year period, that number becomes 8.9 million total intake, 5.3 million killed, and $2.75 billion. Thank you.
And I appreciate the statistics. It didn't quite get to the heart of the matter because I also don't want to set up a system where we have, the only way we can fund our vouchers is through fines. I mean, it's almost get out of compliance and we'll help.
And my answer is that the infrastructure is in place for spay and neuter, and it has been because this is the way that we've been trying to approach the problem. So if you go to the website that we've designed for this bill, what we've done is gone out to all the different communities and put their spay and neuter programs on the site. And so you'll see that spay and neuter in California is very well taken care of. Yes, there's always room for growth, and we have put that the money generated in this bill will go to that, but we should be very proud as to where California is with the spay and neuter programs in the different communities. Very proud.
If the concern is funding future spay-neuter initiatives with the new increase in licensing from $10 to $15, and with your support, $7 is now, as opposed to $2 historically, is going into the city's spay-neuter program. So the increase, the number of money, the amount of money and funding going into spay-neuters is going up, and as this legislation takes effect, the number of animals needing it will go down.
Well, colleagues, I would propose this because it doesn't, I respect very much that there are plenty of programs that are out there. Just in one city that I feel better off, I know we don't have enough vouchers today. So I've got to assume that in Oakland, I've got to assume in South San Francisco, I've got to assume a lot of places, it isn't just education, although I take education and vouchers as part of what I would propose, that we support this only if, that we support this, but we ask that the amendment that be attached to this say that there has to be a program of education and vouchers for low-income individuals in all cities and counties in the state as a part of that. I think that gets to the heart of the matter. Second, and if there's no objection to it, I assume we all share that value. Second, the arguments that were made about tourism and dog shows, what sort of mechanism is there for passes? What mechanism is there for allowing us to make sure that that, you know, part of our economy stays strong? And is that provided for in the legislation as well?
It is. And Judy, just pass it on to me. Any owner of a cat or dog who is not a resident of California and who brings a cat or dog into California from outside the state shall be exempted from the permit requirement set forth in this chapter if the owner provides proof, as determined by the local jurisdiction of its or its authorized animal control agency, that he or she had moved from another state or country after April 1, 2008. For purpose of this subdivision, proof may include but not be limited to a valid driver's license from another state.
And if they're visiting, I assume that that covers that as well?
As well.
So it's not just after April 1. I would want to make sure that was there.
Visitors as well, yes.
Well, if we could ensure that as well. And lastly, I'll just, I know I'm over time, I'll just end on this. I appreciate the word $7. I believe all $15 of the entire permanent fee should be going to spay and neutering programs in the city. We still have quite a way to go, and any way we can help you do that in the budget, which is a separate matter, be happy to assist. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Rosendahl, followed by Mr. Wesson, followed by Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Alakon.
Thank you, Madam President. What percentage of the dogs in Los Angeles are registered?
Difficult to say. There are a number of formulas for determining the population of Los Angeles dogs, dog population, and they range from 400 to 800,000, and we're currently registering about 120.
So we might have 800,000 unregistered dogs and about 100 and something thousand that are registered.
In that ballpark.
So why aren't we enforcing the existing law, banging on the doors and making these people register?
Animal Services had a program in its budget which was taken out of the budget in recent years, and we have put together an ad hoc group of officers who are doing just that, and we are seeing some results, and that has been in effect since February of last year. But we do need to beef up our canvassing program, there's no question about it.
So why don't you beef it up now? There's a revenue stream that you can get out of that, and a person who gets a license tends to be more responsible.
Yeah. That would take, that would take an increase in budget for us to be able to do that. What this legislation allows us to do is enforce our licensing law without an increase in budget because it is...
I don't care about the increase in budget. I care about the welfare of the animals and their rights, too.
Increasing our licensing and canvassing program is something that we are working very hard at doing, and we're working with other city departments in helping us do that.
You mentioned brown shirts earlier. What was that comment in reference to?
I think it was a comment that you had made to me earlier that, that some in your...
Please hold my time.
Some in your district had referred to this as a fascist piece of legislation or something to that effect. And I just wanted to assure you that nothing could be further from the truth.
Could you please hold my time? It's been about 15 seconds. I'm sorry, repeat the last part of what you said.
I just wanted, the purpose of my comment was to assure you in response to your comment that you made to me the other day, that this was in no way, shape, or form a fascist piece of legislation.
What does it do to the dog when you take away its natural energy?
I actually have a... Yeah. We do have the chief veterinarian from Riverside, and with your permission, I'd like to have him come up. In addition, I could speak, according to Dr. Helligan, respected author and director of veterinary services... Wait, this is wrong. Doctor, would you please?
Sir, my name is Alan Druces. I'm the chief veterinarian for the county of Riverside, and if it's any consolation, I'm the mayor pro tem for the city of Duquesne. So I can understand certainly your dilemma here and appreciate your questioning. If I can paraphrase the question, it would be, what effect does spaying and neutering have on the temperament of the animal or its interactions with human beings? Certainly, a lot depends on at what age the animal was neutered or spayed. Certainly, in the shelters, we do them as early as eight weeks. Four months is not an uncommon procedure for private practitioners, and animals, puppies and kittens of that age generally wind up to be better pets. They are more friendly, they don't roam, as you've heard from the testimony, and they are less inclined to bite people. So if it's the general disposition of the animal, certainly, there's a benefit there. I won't argue, and my professional colleagues also won't argue, and the behaviorists won't argue, the fact that if you have your typical, and I'll use the phrase, junkyard dog who's, you know, four, five, six years old, an intact male of just a rotten, mean guy that's protecting the junk, if he's intact and you castrate him, I would surmise that not much about his behavior is going to change. He's a territorially oriented, imprinted, ingrained defender of his junk. But there aren't that many of those dogs, and most of them aren't wandering the streets either. So from a danger to society point of view, it's not there.
What about cancer? Is it true that if you alter them, that they have less chance of getting cancer?
Oh, certainly. The most common cancer in female dogs would be mammary tumors. They're generally mixed tumors of various origins. And if you spay a female dog before its first heat cycle, there is an almost zero chance of that animal ever developing mammary tumors. The incidence is decreased subsequent to that. In other words, if they have one or two heat cycles, it certainly is dramatically decreased. And that benefit probably wears off at about four or five years of age. So in other words, if you spay them later in life, the benefits of decreasing the amount of mammary tumors is not there. But certainly, with this legislation, we would anticipate by compliance at this early age, the incidence of these types of tumors to decrease dramatically in the population of dogs.
And if I may, I have a statement from the AVMA, the American Veterinary Medical Association, that says the number-one killer of cats and dogs after euthanasia is cancer. Spaying and neutering can prevent most of these deaths, and they go on to recommend early spay-neuter.
Okay. Let me just point out my concerns. You know, I've had my dog Rosie for 11 years, and she has passed on. She had three litters. I gave the puppies away as gifts to people, didn't make any money on it, it was a pure bred dog, and Rosie had a great, long life. Her daughter Lulu is about four and a half years old. I'm a responsible dog owner, she's true to her nature, and I keep her enclosed, and so there's no issues with her getting hit. So people who have been emailing me like crazy that I'm this breeder type, what I am is a person who loves his animals, and I treat them with great respect and dignity, whatever animals I'm talking about, because they too have personalities and they too should have rights. What I'm really concerned about is only 15, 20% of the people have their animals registered, and they're the ones, the 800,000 potentially, dogs out there, those owners should be responsible people. We should up the fine, and we should make it an offense if you don't get your dogs registered so that there's certain rules. What about that?
And I'll defer to Judy Mancuso on that, but also keep in mind that this legislation addresses cats, and cats are fast becoming the number-one animal dying in our shelters, running loose in our streets, becoming a huge public health concern.
Yeah, and I certainly support cats because, for them to be spayed or neutered because they are free spirits and run around neighborhoods. And in that kind of context, we don't want them breeding out of school, so to speak. So I would go for that. But a dog, if you're a responsible dog owner, you're going to show responsibility toward the nature of that dog.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Hello?
Yeah, it's turning on. Go ahead.
Okay. No one is an irresponsible owner. We haven't met any yet, unfortunately. No one will raise their hand and say, I'm the irresponsible one. And when you look at numbers of 841,000, and those are only the numbers of city and county contracted shelters in the state of California, because those are the only numbers we have due to rabies control that are reported. So we don't have the numbers from the SPCA's and the humane societies because these numbers do not roll up to our state veterinarian for rabies control. Now, when someone, an irresponsible owner, has a litter of dogs and cats, and I do want to just throw in one thing, in a lot of parts of California right now, they are euthanizing 90% of the animals that come into their shelters. I speak to these people every day, and they tell me this is one of their only hopes, is this piece of legislation. I've been working on it for a year, and I have spoken to people from all over the state. And what happens is when you, as a responsible owner, have this litter of dogs or kittens, you then give them out to the well-meaning people that you think that they are.
Right.
Now, you don't follow those dogs or cats for the rest of their life, and unfortunately... And I wish we had a lot of others like you, but that is not the case because what I would like to say is that anyone that has an unaltered animal is a part of this problem, and we cannot point fingers at any one group. We can't possibly get to these numbers without it being a massive problem. This is a crisis. without it being a massive problem. This is a crisis in our state and it does need to be addressed. Thank you.
And Mr. Kuzman.
Yes.
The legislation also allows each jurisdiction, Los Angeles included, of course, to tailor make their licensing program to be more stringent, if that is what you're advocating. And we would certainly support you in that effort.
Well, I certainly think you should make it more stringent. You should be more aggressive about it. If only 10 or 20% of the dog owners have them registered. That's your job, is to get the rest of them registered. And believe me, you can find them and that should be a revenue stream that, that you should accept. Is there any place in the nation or the world that has these laws that make it automatic at four months, you must do this to your animals? Anybody doing that on the planet?
Yes. Can I speak to you about Santa Cruz County? In the year 1995, Santa Cruz adopted spay and neuter. And I've also been working with everyone in Santa Cruz and they'd be happy to bring you into their shelters in Santa Cruz and open up their books and statistics to you. And in a 10-year period, after they implemented spay and neuter, the decrease of the dogs and animals' total intake was 64%. And about 95% of those animals now coming into the shelters in Santa Cruz are spayed and neutered. This is a homegrown model in our state and something to be proud of. And the people of Santa Cruz would invite you in.
Ed, tell us about the, the dogs you take in every year. Do they come from owners who just want to put them down? Where do they come from, the mixture of them, that you put down?
The majority of the animals we take in are called strays, but I prefer to call them lost. These are animals that have somehow, for some reason, typically have gotten away from their owners. They're intact, they're in need of spay neuter, they've been driven by this hormonal instinctual drive to leave home and they end up in our shelters. And because of our admittedly somewhat anemic licensing program, they don't have identification. 100% of the animals that come into our shelter with licenses go home. But unfortunately, 90% of the animals that come into our shelter don't have identification and never go home again, although Los Angeles can boast a return to owner rate that's four times higher than any other major city in the country. So we are doing something right with respect to returning lost animals. Somewhere in the neighborhood, about 4,000 to 5,000 lost animals are reunited with their animals because of our licensing and microchip programs.
The last question is, how does the law work if it goes into effect? How would it impact people watching?
As I mentioned earlier, the, the law was primarily designed by Animal Control to be as cost neutral as possible. We're a complaint-driven organization. People call up and say, the dog next door is running loose again, the dog next door attacked the mailman, the dog next door, whatever the complaint is, we go out, we make sure that the animal is licensed. If it's not, we give people information on licensing. But the problem, the driver of these types of problems, is the fact that the animals are intact. So we can encourage them to get spay neutered and we can give them vouchers to get their animals spay neutered. And some people follow up and are very thankful for our programs. But many people don't. And what this legislation will allow us to do is solve the problem, that first attack, that first bite, as opposed to having to go out the second time and the third time and having dog hearings and vicious dog hearings. All of that escalates. And what this tool will do is will, it will allow us to solve many, many of our problems the first time we're out there.
Can I address also, you asked exactly how it would work. First of all, the, one of the other sponsors, Ed has mentioned that this has been written by Animal Control, which it has, which is California Animal Control Directors Association and the State Humane Association of California. But also, the third very proud sponsor we have is CVMA, the California Veterinary Medical Association. And the law states that at four months, all cats and dogs should be spayed and neutered. Cats can go into heat and get pregnant at five months, dogs can at six. Now, if an animal is at any time ill, let's say the puppy or kitten is a little underweight, it might have a respiratory problem, the vet has the ability to say, I'm not ready to spay or neuter this animal. And that then gets extended. We actually give 75 days after the four months so that the animal is at six and a half months so that the veterinarian is very comfortable with the state of the animal and that it is prepared for surgery. Now, also, at any time, if the animal, let's say is a 14-year-old cat with renal failure, that animal cannot undergo anesthesia, that animal would be exempt. If you get a ticket, if in fact you are one of these people that are found without your animal, unaltered, you get 30 days to fix it, literally fix it. And at that time, Animal Control can then waive the fee. We made that fee $500. And the reason why we made that fee $500 is because we want compliance. If it only costs you $20 or $30 to get your animals spayed or neutered, even if it costs you $200 to get your animals spayed or neutered, it's better than paying $500. And the other thing is, one of the misconceptions about the bill has been, well, people just give up their animals. Well, that doesn't do them any good because the ticket stays with the human, not the animal. So even if they give up that animal, they still owe the $500. So what would be the right thing to do is get dog or kitty spayed and neutered and save yourself the money and you don't have to deal with anybody ever again.
And if I could speak to that enforcement issue as well. Judy had mentioned that there is a 30-day provision to get the animal spayed or neutered, but there is also the provision that allows Animal Control officers to give people extended periods of time. Our primary interest, like yours, is the health and welfare of the animals in the community. And we, we're not out to punish people, we're out there to help people. And this is a piece of legislation, especially coupled with our voucher program, that gives us the tools to help people in need get the service for their animals that they need.
Somebody handed me this just now about places, experiences where mandatory spaying and neuter laws haven't worked. And they mentioned Fort Worth, Texas, Montgomery County, Maryland, Kings County, West Virginia, Camden, New Jersey, Aurora, Colorado. And they basically say that people just didn't register their animals anymore. There was less registration than we had before. Is there any proof to this stuff here?
And Mr. Rosendahl, this, you can push your button again after this question is answered.
Sir, I, I have read a lot of these stories and, and seen the articles that say that it doesn't work. Oftentimes, it's a matter of statistical analysis, it didn't work. One, because they never enacted the ordinance in the first place. King County, Washington is often cited as a failure. Well, King County held hearings very similar to these and whenever it was, five or six years ago, the, the city council voted it down. So of course it didn't work because it never was, never was passed. So you have to read into some of these analyses to get a true comprehension of what, what the story was and how aggressive Animal Control was permitted to, to enforce the, the spay neuter laws. And I agree 100, you won't find anybody probably in this room that doubts that from a enforcement perspective, that we don't do enough in convincing the dog owning population to vaccinate for rabies and license their, their animals. And we should be doing more.
Okay. Well, I'll push my button again next time around. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wesson, followed by Mr. Cardenas. Excuse me, I think Mr. Cardenas is going to close. Mr. Wesson, Mr. Alacon, and then Mr. Garcetti, followed by Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you, Madam President and members. I was looking for President Garcetti, but I will say that I will with caution, with caution, support his amendment. But we have to realize for at least those of us that have been in the state senate or the assembly, we as a council need to be careful that we don't handcuff the, the representative because at the end of the day, Mr. Levine is going to be the one that tries to form a, or try to negotiate. So we don't want, we need to have, be cautious. We need to have caution where it relates to limiting his ability. So I'd like to ask Ed a couple of quick questions. So if you could hold my time after the questions. How much does it cost the city of LA to shelter and, and kill the number of dogs that we do every year? Hold my time.
Our, our current budget is about $25 million. It has recently been increased by 23% this year, just to handle the load. And over the last five years, it's had to be, be increased by 36%.
So what's the total again? What was the total we spent to shelter and to kill?
About $20 million.
About $20 million.
So $20 million a year. In the event that this were to be passed, do you anticipate that it would be a reduction in that $20 million? Hold my time.
Over time, yes. There, other states have conducted studies on the amount of money invested in spay neuter programs and they have found a dramatic decrease in animal control costs over a 10-year period.
So now with those savings, could you beef up your enforcement and could that, would that money be flexible for you to do other things?
That is the intention. That is our, our, our plan, yes.
Okay, thank you. Now let me ask you this. What is the percentage of the dogs that are sick or dangerous dogs that are in our shelter that we kill? Or no, what's the percentage of, of healthy dogs that, that could still lead a good life if they had a home? What percentage of, of the dogs would be considered good dogs? Dogs and cats?
Off the cuff, and because that's a very difficult and subjective judgment, I would see in the neighborhood of 50% or so.
Okay, so probably half of the dogs are okay. Is that?
Yes.
You know, there's merit on both sides of, of the argument. And I guess depending on how you spin it, you could be right. I have right now, two dogs. Tiffany, my little girl, I got her fixed and no problem. Peabody, my number one son, we got him fixed and I still couldn't keep him in the house. I mean, so things happen. But, so, but the point I want to make is just an emotional point. You all know that I, I do the best I can to help Ed sell as many dogs as we have. But I had a dog, similar to you, Bill. His name was Banditamo. 15 years. I got him about a couple of months before my son was born. He lived for 15 years. At the end, he was really sick and he couldn't move and the most difficult thing that I had to do was to put him down. And I felt because he was family, that I had to be there with him when it occurred. And at the last second, the cloudy eyes that he had became clear. And he looked me in my face as I looked at him and we said goodbye to each other. So it pains me to think of 50% of the dogs that we will, and cats, we will call them good companion animals, that may have maybe two years old, one year old, six years old, and so many years left on their life. It pains me to think about when they get that shot and towards the end, their eyes are going to be clear when they could have another 10 years of life. So what I suggest is the important thing about this issue is that the city of LA should send a message to Sacramento to keep the debate alive. Because that's what we're doing now. I have nothing at all against the breeders or the people who are opposed to this bill. They make good sense on some of their areas. They have merit in their concerns. But if we keep the debate alive and if we give the assembly member the opportunity and the wiggle room to try to come up with an arrangement that both sides can live with, I think that that's important to us. Because if we're talking about 400,000 dogs killed, killed, I have concerns about that. And I think that the worst thing that we could do is to do nothing. The best thing that we could do is to keep the debate alive. So I would ask for an I vote. And I would suggest that through the mayor's office and you, Ed, that we track this legislation, that we are engaged in the discussions where it relates to amendments, that Mr. Garcetti, we carefully word the, the suggestion or amendment that you had. And let's see at the end of the day if we can make this happen. And for those that think that this died in committee, it didn't die.
No.
It took public testimony.
Right. And it's going to be voted on on the 24th.
Again, so I think, so I, anyway, I asked for an I vote and I think this has been an excellent debate. But let's think about, I mean, I come here every other Friday with a dog or a cat and everybody runs up, oh, little baby, da, 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 da. Those are the dogs we're killing. That's, I mean, it's killing. Those are the dogs and the cats that we're killing. You need to think about that.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Mr. Alacon, followed by Mr. Garcetti.
First of all, I'm happy to, to support the legislation. But I do want to say that, that I'm fearful that we are not in a position to respond effectively to the legislation once passed. So I think we have a lot more work to do before we will be able to implement this program effectively. I also don't understand why we need Sacramento to do this for us. Why can't we just do this in the city of Los Angeles? Is there anything, is there anything in the, is there anything in state law that prohibits us from doing exactly what is in the legislation?
Absolutely not. In fact, I was wondering this morning if there isn't any reason why the city council couldn't vote on it for the city of Los Angeles today.
Well, I would, I would, I, I think, I, I think there would be some, some motion that would have to be introduced. However, let me say that, that I would be supportive of creating a program such as this immediately in the city of Los Angeles without having to wait for Sacramento. However, I think that, that we need your most dedicated attention to providing with us a management program that would more effectively be able to do this than rely on Sacramento.
Absolutely.
To observe the local condition that we have.
And if I could speak to the...
A couple of, just let me mention a couple of things that I believe are essential. We need to expand our program for poor and working poor folks to be able to get their animals spayed and neutered. And we need your guidance on, on how to best do that. The fine program, I was very impressed with the fact that you are cited. However, if you get the dog spayed or, or, or the dog or cat spayed and neutered, you can avoid that $500 cost and can get it more reasonably and perhaps even use a voucher at the shelter. We do have to expand the, the dollars available for spaying and neuter in the shelter. We, I also agree that we have to double and redouble our efforts to enforce the requirements to register your animals. And it's not just dogs and cats, it's just about every animal I can think of. But, but we, we would need to see that, I think, in the report that would come forward. But I would be happy to support with my colleagues, an effort to create this legislation internally and not have to rely on Sacramento.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And just to address the amendment that was put forward, you're looking at earlier language, the most recent copy, which I looked at in the interim, does include, thank you, Mr. Cardenas, both the, that it's not may, but that a local animal control agency shall establish a free and low-cost spay and neuter program for low-income individuals and that the agency shall undertake outreach efforts to inform qualified persons about these programs. So that amendment's been added. So, so I withdraw the, the previous request that that be put in, but that allows that to be in there. One thing though, that I, I think I heard you say that I just want to talk about, it's, it's germane to the subject, but do you say that you've taken out the, the canvassing program out of the budget? Did I hear you correctly?
Council members, Linda Barth, the Assistant General Manager of Animal Services. The canvassing program is actually unfunded in our department and has been for quite a number of years. At one time, it was funded, then there was a contractor that did the work. Currently, however, as the general manager mentioned, what we've done is taken salary savings to develop sort of an ad hoc group using some vocational workers and part-time employees. It's not a full complement of canvassers. There's no supervisor for the effort. There's somebody who sort of shares his attention. So there's some deployment of a canvassing group, but it's not as fully mobilized as if we could get the 10 full-time positions that we'd like to have in order to actually get them working full-time and working on more of a program aspect. So it's, it's really just sort of a part-time effort. But it has yielded some results, about an additional 5,000 or 10,000 licenses a month, for example, in addition to the regular that's coming in. So it's helping, but it's a small startup effort with salary savings.
I'm a little troubled by that. I think members of the press corps will remember when we had a press conference, I think it was about two years ago, maybe a year and a half. I think it was about two years ago, maybe a year and a half ago, where we announced the canvassing effort. It was something that the Budget and Finance Committee in this council and two different administrations of mayors very much supported. We looked at Los Angeles County's efforts and how successful that canvassing program. And a lot of the animal advocates said this is really the core to, especially in the lower-income areas, this working. And I appreciate that departments right now are in a number of different financial squeezes. But for that to have only come out here in this context, that there had been a great reduction of that or that it's only being done on an ad hoc basis, is troubling to me. That has to be, we are here as your friends and your allies, but we need the relationship too, where if there's been a mandate from this council, it continues. And if it's not going to, that you come to us and you tell us that there is something that is not moving forward and that we don't just hear about it in an ad hoc way here. Because that is critical for our communities, that door-to-door programming. And the way that that then touches every Angelino and the way the county has done efficiently is key to the educational efforts that everybody in this room has been talking about. And if we need to fix that budget hole, we will. But we need to make sure, what are you using that money instead for? Not that it actually was ever said specifically that it would be there, but we had a commitment, maybe through a change of leadership, but nevertheless, a commitment to the people of Los Angeles for doing that program. And just because we have different council members who come on board, different leadership in a department, we can't break that word to the folks out there in Los Angeles. So I say that as a side note because I was a little troubled to hear that. And I think that we need not only an ad hoc one, we need a systematic canvassing program. And when it was first pitched to us, it was something that would kind of pay for itself over time because if you have effective workers, they're paying for their own position. So to say that it wasn't cost-effective too also raises a question. So I would like to put that before we do our budget process on your agenda as well. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. I think Herb Wesson is the most brilliant one I've met around the horseshoe. He's given me a way out that I can be comfortable with. But I'm in the midst of an issue. What does this do to my dog Lulu, who is not altered?
Well, as I explained in our conversation the other day, council member, you really are the poster boy for this piece of legislation. You are a responsible breeder. You would be exempted.
And that's because I spend 100 dollars versus the 10?
Exactly.
So it doesn't change for me at all?
Not at all.
Well, colleagues, as a dog lover and an animal lover of all kinds of animals, I really believe in the sacredness of their nature. But I also understand the terrible situation we have. I had to put my dog Rosie down. She was over 11, almost 12, and I was right there holding her as she went down. And it's a terrible thing, if you love your animals, to see that kind of abuse. And it's also a terrible thing to see how people abuse their animals. They have them running loose. They're not registering their animals and they're not treating them properly. Those people should be aggressively pursued by your depart... And it is with heavy heart that I will support this legislation for the common good of everybody.
Thank you.
This has been an excellent dialogue. It's been an excellent opportunity for people to learn and grow on this issue. And it's also been an excellent opportunity for people to understand that there's much more dialogue that needs to take place. Again, this is a resolution. This is not city legislation. It's been talked about that possibly one of us council members may come up with legislation to just do exactly this, probably fine-tune it a little bit more to tailor to our city. But that opportunity may come very soon. But what I wanted to point out is that this legislation is very simple. It basically is assisting us as human beings and making sure that as a society, we take the responsibility that we should take in making sure that animals, that if we left them out in the wild, we wouldn't be having this discussion. We're not talking about spaying neutering mountain lions or bears or what have you. We're talking about dogs and cats. We as human beings made them our domestic animals. Now we have the responsibility of making sure that we do not allow them to continue or to fall into cruel situations. For example, I think it's cruel upon the animals that were abandoned the other day that these two rottweilers attacked a woman who was jogging. It's cruel to the animals that they be in that situation because the human beings abandoned them. And the fact of the matter is, when animals are abandoned, domestic animals are abandoned, they are more likely to fight with each other amongst themselves and they are more likely to attack a human being. We caused that problem. The animals didn't. They at one time were owned by human beings. Just the fact that the rottweilers means that rottweilers didn't just pop up on earth. They were bred into being rottweilers by human beings. Yet at the same time, we abandoned them. I just want to give that as an example of what we're trying to solve here. And it's very emotional. But the problem is, we must solve it. And that's the reason why I'm encouraging my colleagues on the City Council of Los Angeles to support this imperfect legislation. Because legislation is never perfect. Never. Even Herb Wesson knows, and he had some great legislation. Just not perfect. I look forward to the day, and I think this is going to contribute to the day, that this complements the fact that we have an animal cruelty task force now, the fact that we will continue to canvass our communities and educate people. All these things, this is a perfect complement to be in a responsible society, a responsible city, and hopefully, a responsible state. I look forward to the day that Herb Wesson walks up to that microphone as lonely as can be and doesn't have a dog or a cat to ask to be adopted. And Herb, I promise you, if we see that in our lifetime, and I dream and pray that we see that in our lifetime, I will give you a hug.
We're looking toward that.
And we should commemorate that day. We should commemorate that that day will come. But it's not going to come without this legislation. And it's not going to come without other legislation. It's not going to come without infusing more and more dollars responsibly in the right places on the front end. And spay and neuter requirements is a front-end issue. That is something that is not complicated. We need to support this legislation. Please, let's support this legislation, hopefully unanimously. Let's send a message so that the dialogue is strong in Sacramento and they get a better piece of legislation by the time it gets signed by the government.
Thank you. Madam Clerk? Are there any, are we going with the report that came from committee?
Yes, Madam President. The amendment was withdrawn.
Okay. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 eyes.
That item has been approved. Thank you. Next item. Next item, Madam President, is item number eight. And that was called special by Councilmember Garcetti. Thank you. Yes, item number eight. We will go. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And along with the chair of our Housing, Community, and Economic Development Committee, Mr. Wesson, simply wanted to call number eight special.
Mr. Garcetti, maybe, sorry. If we could have everyone in the room, we're continuing with our business. If you could just take your conversations outside, if that's going to please.
Thank you. Thank you. Item number eight, we call it special simply because it's something to be proud of here in Los Angeles. I know folks have heard about this. But this builds on an award that our housing department got. It's considered the Academy Awards of government, of government funding, sorry, government programs, that each year, the Kennedy School of Government picks the very best examples of government innovation throughout the country and gives them an Innovations in Government Award. Here in Los Angeles, our Systematic Code Enforcement Program, or SKEP, received that award. And this today allows us to take this model through a grant and share it throughout the country. In districts like Mr. Reyes's and my own, Ms. Perry's, others, where there's old housing stock, the SKEP program is critical in keeping people living in non-slum conditions. But it's also a great investment program. It's literally brought about $4 billion of investment. Because when property owners have to comply and make sure that they aren't keeping their tenants in substandard conditions, they invest and that creates jobs and better housing for everybody. So I just wanted to congratulate the housing department. Before, when I was chair, we worked closely on the expansion of SKEP to make sure it would go every three years here in the city. And we were very proud of the award when it was given a couple of years ago. This now allows Los Angeles to take our model and help other cities and other tenants and landlords across the country get into compliance, help make sure that the quality of their housing stock is as good as it can be. So it's a great day for Los Angeles and I just wanted to congratulate the housing department. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. We add all of us our congratulations for their effectiveness on this program. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
12 eyes.
Next item.
Item number 15 was called special by Councilmember Cardenas. And there is an amending motion that has been distributed to the council.
Tony.
Mr. Cardenas.
Your item, 15. Thank you. Sorry about that. I called this item special for the technical amendments and they've been handed out to all the council members. So they are on everyone's desk. And again, they're just technical amendments, so the substance of the item is still the same.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. That item with the amending motion is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes. 11 eyes. That item has been approved. Next item.
Next item, Madam President. Item number four was being held on the desk. And I believe there is a request to continue that item.
Continue for a week? Okay.
And that would be April 24th.
Okay. So we're going to change that and continue it, actually, till tomorrow, Madam Clerk. Next item.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motions will be posted and referred.
Excuses on the desk. Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused Wednesday, May 9th for personal business, that meets council policy.
Will be excused.
And also, he requests to be excused Tuesday, April 17th, to leave early, and June 26th and 27th. Those are for city business and they meet council policy.
They'll be excused.
Councilmember Garcetti requests to be excused Tuesday, April 24th, to leave at 11:00 a.m. for city business. That meets council policy.
He will be excused.
And that clears the desk.
Thank you. Do we have announcements today, colleagues? Yes, Mr. Labonge.
I just wanted to say it was a wonderful event on Sunday evening at Los Angeles Dodger Stadium, where they honored the great legacy of the 60th anniversary of Jackie Robinson. And the beautiful presentation that Ed Reyes had in council here was shown on the television, which was so nice. And it was a wonderful evening for all to enjoy. I wanted to remember that great event that kicked off here in our council chambers under the leadership of Mr. Reyes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, Madam Chair. I just want to announce that I was in Sacramento yesterday and the Transportation Committee, 13 to 0, approved the Green Line authority going forward into LAX. It was a great day for the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements, colleagues? Do we have adjourning motions? I know I have one, yes. If we could ask everyone to please rise. Colleagues, I know that we all join today. Could I have quiet and everyone? Maybe close the door back there. Thank you. Join today in adjournment, yesterday marked the commemoration of one of the greatest tragedies of the last 100 years, the Holocaust, that killed over 6 million people in Europe. And it's with great sadness that that horrible event is matched with the worst school shooting in U.S. history. 33 students, and I think today it was 34 students, who passed this morning, I heard on the radio, and faculty at the Virginia Tech University when an individual opened fire in the dormitory and classroom. The loss of these families, to these families and children, is really quite profound. These young men and women were just beginning their adult lives. As our campuses are home to so many of our children, we understand the importance of this activity that occurred, this tragedy that occurred. So I'd like us all to join in memory of those that perished yesterday and to adjourn and honor those that have survived and are now faced really with the challenge in the wake of such a horrendous tragedy. Definitely all members. Mr. Labonge. Ms. Rosendahl.
Dan Vanazewella and his wife Nancy Vanazewella both passed away within the last three weeks. Dan was a Venice resident, as was his wife, and a member of St. Mark's Church. In fact, I saw him there as we were doing a eulogy for Chuck Snow from Lincoln Place. He was a recipient of the Spirit of Venice Award. You could find Dan riding his bike most mornings, going to the beach to say hi to folks. He was a major activist with the Chamber of Commerce and also with St. Mark's Church. May he and his wife rest in peace.
Mr. Rosendahl, any other adjourning motions? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. This meeting is now adjourned.